Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. Many of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, please take role. Chris is not here, so Mr. Fiander. How would you like to handle that?
I will handle this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Have no fear.
Seeing this process here.
Okay, roll call. Armstrong.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Cavazos.
Here.
Gales.
Here.
Ha.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Canar.
Here.
Ringler.
Here.
And Woods, absent. We have eight present. We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Excellent, thank you. Communications, oh wait, let's start here with approval of the minutes from August 15th. Everyone should have had copies. Do we have any comments, questions for staff? Any modifications? If there are none, I entertain a motion to approve.
I so believe.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Fiander, let's take role.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Cavazos.
Aye.
Gales.
Aye.
Ha.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Canar.
Aye.
And Ringler.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving along, item C, communications to the commission. I see that we're going to recognize someone will be no longer with us. Mr. Beck.
We are. Okay, if you say so.
Do we have to vote on this? You could lose this vote, you know.
Mr. Chair, a couple of things. Number one, as you can see, Chris is not here tonight. She is spending the day becoming a grandma for the first time.
Awesome.
So, just got an update, baby's fine, just.
How's the grandma doing?
Yes, so mom's good.
Grandma's doing all right.
Grandma's even better, I think. Updates on the zoning cases that were before you last month. Working men of Christ PUDs were approved by city council governing body. And also, the newcomer PUD is on for tomorrow night. That was deferred a little bit because there was a protest petition that came in on that. So, for those of you not aware, instead of a simple majority, the governing body has to have eight out of 10 votes to pass that. So, we'll see what happens tomorrow night on that and report back next month. Yes, and then also, we do have a special, this is a special night for Commissioner Beck. We want to recognize him and his years of service. How long, what year did you start there, Kevin? Do you remember?
I lose track of years, it's been six years total.
Been six years, okay. I went back in the archives a little bit to see what our agendas were like way back in the day. We have, for some reason, we have considerably less items on here just after you started. So, I don't know if that has anything to do with the power you wield or something, but.
Hopefully, they're not nervous and scared.
No, I want to recognize you. Commissioner Beck, you have been an outstanding role model as a planning commissioner. I know several words come to mind when I think of your leadership. You've been professional, progressive, fair, and you're knowledgeable and you really care. And I think that goes into a perfect kind of commissioner that we love to see up here. And no matter what happens, that's, you know, good things flow from that. And of course, I think you were the chair when I stepped into this seat, and so I always have that in my debt to you for really sharpening my vision and helping leadership at that time. So, with that, we do have something I need to, I have to read, actually, unless you want to vote on this. So, we're glad to present from the City of Topeka on this 19th day of September 16, in recognition of Kevin Beck for his service to the city as a member of the Topeka Planning Commission. Oh, here it is, Planning Commissioner, October 2010 to September 2016. Vice Chair, January 2012 to January 2013. And then Chairperson, January 13 to January 15. Signed by Larry Walgast, Mayor of Topeka. So, thank you and appreciate everything.
That's all I have, yes, please.
Take a moment and say thank you. I'll keep this brief, kind of like a lot of my comments try to keep them brief. But I just wanted to say thank you, first off, to, I think it was, at the time, Councilman Archer that took my application and sent it to Mayor Bunton, who then ultimately put me on the commission, so I want to say thank you to them. And also, as we move forward, and the second term was Mayor Walgast that let me stay on. So, thank you to the commissioners, both those that are here tonight, as well as those that have gone before me. And hopefully, we've done some good. Staff, I want to thank you. It's been an honor to serve with you. You've got some great ideas coming forward now, and in the past, not just now. I think we're becoming a progressive city, so I think we're moving in the right direction. Just thank you very much, we'll enjoy the last event together.
Excellent, thank you, Commissioner Beck. We appreciate your service, and I can concur with the thoughts of Mr. Fiander. I think you've been a good example for us on the commission and our community on how to have a thoughtful, and when needed, a critical perspective about some of the items we've had to deal with. And I think you've been very instrumental in us forming solutions for these when sometimes the most easiest solution wasn't right there before. So, I appreciate your leadership and your mentorship and your guidance in the last six years. I know you had just joined when I had joined, and so it was kind of helpful to hear your perspective about things, and appreciate it. Thank you very much. So, in lieu of a moment where you have a kind of a Mel Gibson-esque freedom scream as you head out the door, we hope you indulge us and stay for the rest of the meeting until you're officially off the commission. All right, super. Excellent. So, with that in mind, we'll move to item D, declaration of conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members of the commissioner's staff. Does anyone have anything to declare? Mr. Beck?
I will declare that I won't leave for the entire meeting, but I do need to step out for item F1, because I have a conflict. And I will return after.
Super. Excellent. Anyone else? Mr. Armstrong.
Mr. Chair, I will also be stepping out for item E1.
Okay. We should have a quorum in the case. Excellent. Any other commissioners? Okay, seeing none, continue to move forward here. Item E1. Ms. Driver, would you like to take the helm?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a major amendment to the Carriage House Apartments Master Plan Unit Development Plan. They are requesting to expand the boundary of that PUD. Can you put up the map in back, please?
Is it not advancing?
They are requesting to expand the boundary of that master PUD plan for multiple family dwelling uses to include a property at 1701 Southwest 37th Street that's currently zoned R1 Single Family Dwelling District. They have proposed to remodel the existing single-family residence, which is about 1,900 square feet, to use as a leasing and management office. This would also give the Carriage House Apartments arterial street frontage and more The zoning and land uses of the surrounding properties are primarily multi-family residential office and institutional and single-family residential. There's an office and a daycare just to the east of the property. Carriage House Apartments are to the south. The retirement center, McCright Retirement Center, is just to the north across Southwest 37th Street. Single-family residences and a baseball county-owned baseball diner to the west. Southwest 37th Street is considered a minor arterial. Current KDOT traffic counts indicate it carries approximately 12,000 trips per day. Applicants indicated they would be dedicating additional right-of-way as needed for future improvements to that street. Part of construction of the parking lot, they'll be building as part of remodel of the house. They will put in a sidewalk along South-Mississauga that will connect 37th Street with 37th Terrace and the apartment complex. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting, notified everybody within 500 feet of the boundary. NIAs within one half-mile. Nobody attended the meeting. The existing single-family residence at 1701 37th Street was built in approximately 1959. It's been vacant since at least 2012. It's currently unoccupied and boarded up. The property currently is likely no longer suitable for uses as it's been restricted as it does take direct access off of the arterial street. That pattern of land use is not as desirable as it may have been in the past. Typically, don't like to see residential driveways taking access directly to the arterial. The office design they have proposed will close that driveway, and they'll have access off of South-Mississauga. The land use and growth management plan considers this area a medium-high-density residential, so this is consistent with the plan. Staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report and remote uncertainty questions you may have.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Driver? Okay, seeing none. At this time, if we have a representative for the owner.
Good evening, Commissioners Angela Sharp with Bartlett &amp; West. Also with me this evening is Lou McGinnis, who is the owner of Carriage House. He happens to own apartment complexes in a number of the surrounding states. And in addition to the Carriage House apartment complex here in Topeka, he has purchased a number of the other complexes, because he has a business plan whereby if he owns at least 1,000 units in a community, he has the opportunity for it to make financial sense to employ full-time all of the maintenance staff and management staff that are required to run a facility. And so, I think we're very lucky to have him in our community and investing his capital dollars to improve those complexes that he's purchasing. As a part of that, he has purchased the home that we're looking at adding to the PUD now, and it will be converting, as Annie said, to leasing and management office. And together with that, they'll be taking out the driveway on 37th and putting a drive-in along Mulvane that will align with the existing driveway for the offices across the street from Mulvane. They also, although they are not adding it to the PUD, they've also purchased the house that is to the west of the home that they're going to be remodeling. And they may use it to allow the manager of the apartment complex to live there, so they'll have a more direct connection with the area, or possibly lease it in the future. So, they will, they do have control of that home as well. But they will be putting screen, fence into screen, the leasing office from that, since it will remain a single-family residence. But this addition will allow them, as Annie said, to have better visibility on the arterial and just provide a better face for the complex moving forward and help with the new amenities and improvements they're making to the overall complex. With that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any commissioner, or fellow commissioners, any questions? All right, thank you. At this time, we will open up the meeting for public comments. If there's anyone here that would like to step forward and comment about this matter, please do so. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. Fellow commissioners, any further discussion or questions pertaining to this item? Just have it observe it, I think it's appropriate for the proposed improvements pertaining to the acquisition of the property. And I guess I appreciate that they've invested in acquiring the additional property to the west so as to minimize impact on a residential, single-family unit that would be adjacent to what could be more of a commercial setting when you have activity occurring for the caretaker's home. But that all being said, this particular area tends to be relatively commercial in its traffic and some of the other uses, considering McCright and Walmart just immediately, well, just there to the east a little bit, and you have another major apartment complex, Park South, that's on the other side of the ball fields, right, and the shopping center down on the corner. So, I could see over time, eventually, that south side of the street trending to be more of a commercial zone. Not saying that that's where it's going, it's all zoned R1. I think this falls in line. Kind of some of the activity that's creating, 37th Street is a primary street, so commercial activity's not unheard of in that environment. Just my observations. Further thoughts or concerns?
I would agree with your comments. I think a vacant house is no good for anyone, and I think it's only put to good use, so I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think it gives, at least now the apartment complex has a presence on the street, it might actually be best in their business interest, too. Commissioner Beck?
I just had one comment, well, a couple of comments, but I'm glad she mentioned the house next door. I happened to look on the website, notice it was the same ownership to the west, so she covered that question. Needless to say, it doesn't need to be part of the PUD, or it could. We do have some staff recommendations that would be approval subject to. We might want to make sure that the client or applicant is aware of and is okay with.
Ms. Sharp, I'm assuming the owner recognizes the comments from staff and their recommendations, and is accepting of them?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Further questions or comments, Mr. Beck?
No, I will say I'm glad to see that they are extending the sidewalk up Mulvane Street to tie into the existing complex. I think it'd be a benefit not only to the city, but the residents within the neighborhood there as well.
Okay. Any further thoughts or questions for staff? Applicant? Is there a motion? Mr. Commissioner Beck?
I move to approve, subject to the recommendations of staff.
One second.
We have a motion, one second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's hold role. Mr. Fiander, are you prepared to hold role for our voting?
Absolutely. Okay, item E1. We'll start with Mr. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos.
Aye.
Mr. Gales.
Aye.
Mr. Ha.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Mr. Canar.
Aye.
Ms. Ringler.
Aye.
And Mr. Armstrong.
Oh, he's abstained.
Yep, we got him. Okay, seven votes for, motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Beck, seat short. You have Mr. Armstrong out there, point him in the right direction. Okay, moving forward. Item two. You have the honor on this one, Ms. Driver. F1, excuse me, F1. Well, give Mr. Armstrong a minute, he might be taking a nap. There's a reason they don't make those seats too comfortable out there, so you can't, just not other time to get relaxed.
You were gone for like two hours last night.
I know. Commissioner Beck and I got caught up on a lot of items. All right, Ms. Driver.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is item F1. It is a request for a design variance approval for Topeka Investment Group subdivision. The plat itself is actually eligible to be processed and approved as a minor plat, which means it can be approved administratively. However, under 1830-040, design variances of the subdivision regulations, the planning commission only is authorized to grant approval of design variances, or certain design variances to the standards. Specifically, the applicant in this case is requesting a variance to that provision that states every lot in the subdivision shall have frontage upon a street. The 1830-040 does lay out criteria that the planning commission should consider in granting approval of the design variance. In this case, the plat is attached tonight. They would be asking for a design variance for Lot 2 and 3 to have their primary public access via a public ingress egress easement instead of having street frontage. That easement has been reviewed and approved by the fire department, city engineer, and public utility agencies. It is intended, will be provided on the plat by notes, and will ensure all owners and future owners, tenants, service providers, and public have access to the street. Staff does recommend approval of the design variance. I am open for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Driver. Do you recall in the original notations of the design requirements, were those variances offered originally by the owner, or were those requests of planning staff?
The owner was the one to propose the design this way, yes. Staff is as supportive of it as any other way of designing the subdivision would mean they would not have shared access onto the frontage road. This is a better design, because it limits them to one access point onto the Highway 24 frontage road with an access opening that's already in place and existing.
Super, that's helpful, because I, it's my understanding, my historical awareness of this, that this was not a requirement stipulated by staff, it was one that they had submitted as part of their requirements. But then now, what they're asking is to kind of be able to look at them as individual lots in lieu of them as a collective, so, okay? So, they're requesting to change previously, or items previously submitted by themselves in lieu of staff-required items, is what I'm understanding.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Driver or staff, pertaining to the items before us? Is it clear what she's proposing that'll be achieved with this modification? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my, one comment I.
Mr. Ha.
I noticed that, I didn't see that first, but I did now see the maintenance of that access easement that's shared by all the lot owners, as I understand it.
We have asked for them to indicate on the plat by note how a maintenance will be provided for. So, yeah, we have asked for them, there is a, the staff report is attached as well, and we have asked, as one of the conditions, that they indicate how maintenance of that driveway would be provided. Typically, it is the responsibility of the lot owners. I believe the applicant is here tonight as well to answer any questions.
Any further thoughts on that? Commissioner Ha?
No, I just wanted to make sure it would be maintained by someone, it's not a city's streets.
Yep. Do they, Ms. Driver, typically on those, are they required to submit some type of formal agreement then, when it's all finally approved, so much whether it's a homeowner in association, or a whatever you might call it, you know, commercial properties?
There is a condition in the staff report that indicates they would have to add a note clarifying who owns, maintains, and is responsible for the 31-foot-wide public ingress egress easement.
So, they'll provide the clarity.
They have not done that.
Approval's conditional upon that, obviously. Okay. Further questions or comments, Ms. Driver? Okay, seeing none at this time. The owner's representative is here and would like to step forward in providing any additional commentary or questions.
Would you like me to?
Good evening, Mark Boyd with SBB Engineering. Guess to address your comment, Dennis, we haven't articulated that note yet, but I'm anticipating that they're good with the shared maintenance across all lots. And in addition, there'll be something filed on record, the Shawnee County Register of Deeds that will address maintenance requirements. They'll go into further detail, we won't try to put all that on the plat.
Subject to any other comments from Mr. Boyd?
No, I guess I would just add that the preliminary comments that we received on the review, none of those are of issue. We'll eliminate notes and combine notes and do what's necessary to clean it up. You know, just the notes that were on the plat, as they're written, were carried over from the original subdivision plat. Some of them don't quite apply right now, so we'll clean that up.
Excellent. Any further questions of Mr. Boyd? All right, thank you, Mr. Boyd. Fellow commissioners, any comments or observations, questions? So, most of this appears to be proposed by the owners of the property, allow for them to further develop, and the development appears to be in line. The proposed development approach appears to continue to be in line with the previously agreed to, just allowing for some other adjustments or contingencies to occur. So, I'm familiar with the property, having kind of observed it as it was constructed and been over there multiple times with the various tenants that are associated with the area. I think, you know, to some degree, the failure, the lot that's there to be developed is somewhat a result of the economy and late, you know, five or six, seven years ago, after the first parts of this were done, it kind of died, so now it's kind of reinvigorating itself with the last remaining property. So, to their credit, they're positioning themselves for what it appears to be to best promote the availability of that property and make sure the access is adequate and suitable to all the remaining properties that are built out. So, I guess I don't see any issues with it. But that being said, I want to be sensitive to everybody's concerns or questions pertaining to this. Entertain a motion, or? Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion in two seconds. You're welcome to take one. That's right. Any further, square, so.
Motion back, Commissioner Armstrong.
She's deferred to Mr. Hall, Commissioner Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none. Mr. Feiner, please take your role.
Ms. Cavazos.
Aye.
Mr. Gales.
Aye.
Mr. Hall.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Mr. Knar.
Aye.
Ms. Ringler.
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong.
Aye.
Seven votes pass, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Driver. All right, that will move to item G1, if I'm correct. Mr. Hall, is your item? Yep.
Yes, thank you.
We'll give Mr. Beck a moment to wake up, come on in. We didn't give him as much time as we gave Mr. Armstrong.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, last meeting, we gave you a preview of the draft code amendments we'd be presenting to you over the course of the next few months. There'll be three meetings, this is one of those three where we will present these to you for discussion. We anticipate, depending on the direction we get from you, we anticipate bringing all of them for you at the December meeting for a recommendation to the City Council. This first batch. In this, in my presentation tonight, I'm going to kind of focus on the why we're doing it, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to read them word for word, I'm sure you're happy about that. If there is a particular question, or if there is something you want to discuss in a little more detail, just please let me know. Some of these probably require a little more discussion than others. So, site plan review and landscape plan, we have two chapters in the zoning ordinance, one on the landscape plan requirement, and one on site plan review. So, first topic is thresholds. Okay, it kind of helps to understand the process of site plan review. This is something that the Planning Commission doesn't typically see, because it's an administrative process, but it's something that we deal with on, anytime there's new development, anytime there's a change to a building. Okay, there we go. So, with any building permit for a commercial project, we do require a site plan. We don't require them to, we don't require a site plan review application for every project. If a site plan review is required, the application submitted to planning, it's about a two-week process typically, site plan review, we coordinate that application with, review with other departments. Sometimes there's a discussion needed, because we have to coordinate our comments and our review. For example, if there's a traffic impact analysis, that's important to coordinate with traffic engineering, and it's better to do that, this is really the planning stage, it's better to do that before someone submits for a building permit, if there is some significant requirement that could affect the building permit submittal. At the end of that process, it's preliminary approval with conditions typically, conditions that are met at building permit submittal. If no site plan is required, it just goes directly to building permit. So when you think, it helps to understand that, to understand the context of these code amendments. I don't know why this isn't reading. Yeah, okay. Okay, so currently, this is just an example of a project that we're, we haven't received any application for it yet, but someone owns a building that is currently used for an office. At one point, it was a fast food restaurant years ago, and they're proposing to add a drive-through lane, and a drive-through window, and also to expand the parking lot. You can kind of see, on the north side, where it's adjacent to residential use, that's an expansion of the parking lot. You can see the arrows indicate where the drive-through lane would be. Some interesting information here, there's two points of driveway access on a major arterial, principal arterial. That's not a desirable situation, it's a lot of access points, a lot of potential traffic conflict points. So, currently, taking a literal reading of the ordinance today, this does not require a site plan review. However, this one will certainly require maybe a minor traffic impact analysis, and to do that with just a building permit, it doesn't provide for a desirable level of coordinated review and coordination. And so, with this, with this proposed code amendment, this would require a site plan review application or a landscape plan. Next. This is an example of an industrial project, and what we've experienced, we've had a few industrial-type development applications we reviewed over the past year or so, and in trying to follow to the letter, the current landscape ordinance, it requires an unreasonable amount of landscaping, based on the feedback we've gotten. It's unnecessary, probably. This is an example of where someone has a large storage yard, they have a part of their property that's unimproved, and the, what is proposed is, with the amendment, is that the storage yard would not be used to count for the number of points that are required to meet. The way the landscape ordinance works, someone generates a required number of points, and they meet that through a landscape plan. The current ordinance does give us some flexibility to approve alternate landscape plans, but if we have standards that are reasonable, it'll give our ordinance more credibility, and we'll be able to implement it in a more consistent way, which I think is, works to everyone's, in everyone's favor. Next. Okay, just, I've kind of covered this, but, yeah, do you have any questions about that? So far. Okay. One thing that I haven't covered yet, on the landscape and site plan requirements, currently, there is no standard, there are no standards that address how trash enclosures are designed, where they're placed, any screening requirements. That's somewhat unusual, I think, in a code, to not have that. We have been asking people who propose to put trash enclosures, say, in the front set back, or in front of the building, to design them a certain way. It's a pretty reasonable requirement, in fact, a lot of retail developers will just do that, because it works in their favor, but there are some that might not. So this proposed amendment would give us some standards, but also some flexibility to address certain situations. Some sites, especially sites in older parts of the city, are smaller, and there's less flexibility to place trash enclosures. Okay, so, getting to the uses, again, I'm not going to go over the specifics unless you want me to, but automobile wrecking and salvage yards, this is a real common use in Topeka. The city clerk, chapter five of the code, I think it is, requires a license, an annual license, for auto wrecking and salvage yards, but there's no specific listing in our zoning ordinance. What we've been doing is treating it like manufacturing processing type three, and in that instance, in that case, it's a conditional use, in the I-2 zone, it's prohibited in all of the zones. I can tell you that a number of the salvage yards that are in Topeka are non-conforming uses, they've been there a long time, and they operate without a conditional use permit. But new, but new auto wrecking and salvage yards require a conditional use permit.
If I may add, the reason there is no salvage yard auto wrecking use in the zoning matrix, it kind of got lost in the, when we converted to the zoning matrix, and it's, so there are a number of these things that the conversions, we kind of lost along the way, so we're bringing it back, and that's, that's the honest reason it's not in there. I think, I think there was an expectation it would be folded into one of the industrial uses, and I'm not sure that really happened.
So the next change that's proposed is adding quite a lot of language that addresses microbreweries, and micro distilleries, and even small-scale wineries. Annie actually drafted this, and so if you have specific questions, she might be better able to answer those, but really, the purpose of this, the why, is that a lot of these types of uses are a desirable use, you know, downtown or in other, other traditional business districts like Noto. They potentially generate vibrancy, but at some level, they can become industrial in nature, and that's really not what's intended, and so we've added some language to address that. So that's the reason for the limits as to what defines them as microbreweries and distilleries versus just brewers and distilleries. The proposed amendment clarifies what's permitted and includes distilleries and small wineries in the category, it also adds special use requirements applicable to those uses. Those special use requirements apply to the mixed use in the downtown districts. Oh, I'm on exhibit five, or I just finished exhibit five. Are there any questions about that?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Armstrong.
Is a barrel equivalent to a keg, limiting them to 5,000 per year?
A barrel is larger than a keg, I believe. I'm not sure, but it's, one barrel equals 31 gallons, Annie tells me. So 5,000 barrels is 155,000 gallons.
Perfect, thank you.
My compliments, Ms. Driver, and your knowledge about beer quantities.
I think most people count beer by the pint, or the glass, or the, so we're dealing with-
What is it, 5,000 then?
You can probably do that math easier than I can. Not, not because, because you're an engineer, not for other reasons.
That is, it is.
Okay, so, mobile retail vendors. So, this is really more for clarification than anything, there's probably one significant impact of this, but currently, we do have a lot of mobile retail vendors in the city, it's real common. There's one that recently set up, it's a rug dealer up at 21st and Farallon, but there are also food trucks, and even more temporary ones. So, we have reviewed those, we have allowed those in zoning districts where retail isn't allowed use. This really just clarifies that. The one significant change this does is, it provides standards whereby you can allow mobile retail vendors in residential districts, if it's a public facility. So, let's say the food truck festival in Gage Park, this just provides some clarity on that. The county, we've actually spoken with the county, and they are, they've discussed doing a licensing program, or some kind of permitting program, to grant people permits to have food trucks in their parks, and so this is consistent with that. Also, the city attorney, and I think Mary specifically is working on this, is working on some licensing requirements for temporary retail vendors, mobile retail vendors, and we will be coordinating with the legal office to make sure we're consistent on the definitions and what have you. Are there any questions about that? That's exhibit six in your packet.
Does that, would that include, for instance, the library truck, or bus, or whatever it's looked at, wouldn't that fall into that category?
Yes, it could, the way it's written. The owner has to approve it, so, for example, I'm not sure, and some, some uses might not be, be desired, but the owner does have to approve it, so that's-
And that was my concern, is if we got into a non, you know, where it was not allowed, and yet it was kind of an accepted standard, I wanted to make sure we had some sensitivities to that. I think everybody would be an advocate for a similar vehicle just simply used with the library books.
Yeah, one, one thing I've seen is, say, large school campuses, they might allow a food truck to come on campus. I think most people find that reasonable and appropriate. Where you could have bad situations, maybe you have a parking lot or a street for a park, a small park, and it's right next to someone's home. This gives us the ability to say, you know, you need to be set back a certain distance. It doesn't specify specific standards, but I think it gives us some ammunition to do that.
Sure. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Armstrong.
Bookmobile is the term I'm looking for.
Remind me when I'm on a game show to have Brian on my speed dial. No, isn't it, what is a bookmobile, Brian? Is that the correct response? Mr. Hall, go ahead.
What would happen if, say, a neighborhood wanted to have a block party, and they close off the street, and would like to have a food truck come be part of the celebration? Is that something that would fit in, or is it, that would be-
I would say that, I'd say that this doesn't really address that. We did talk about temporary uses, we do get those, not specifically what you're talking about, but I know that churches have had parties, and certainly there are block parties. Churches, I think, when they have those, those types of activities, they might have to get the license through the clerk's office, and we do see those, but we have considered those as accessory uses. Those are probably in the category of temporary uses, and this isn't, although some of these are temporary, this isn't really a temporary use ordinance. That kind of opens up a whole other topic, and that's something that we did talk about trying to address, but we're quite equipped-
Because I would say, like, a similar thing would be, now I've seen these, where they have an event, a street event, and they have, it's set up with video games, you come in and, you know, like, six people play games against each other inside, and the vehicle is, and it, the doors open up, and it's, you know, I've seen, well, using in church, where they had it as part of a Sunday, or a, you know, in the week of Bible school, and they had one of these mobile game trailers pulled out into the street, and they opened up the side door, and you could see all the seats in there to play games and stuff, and so, I guess I would be curious how all those are coming, I'm hearing you say that would be a special event type of permit in lieu of some type of licensed retailer food truck, et cetera.
But are they selling, this only applies to selling things?
Okay, so it'd have to be a true retail moment, like with a tax transaction, in lieu of a rented special event type of vehicle?
Right, it wouldn't apply to a bookmobile, or the-
Okay, fair enough. That starts to make sense now.
I can say that the ordinance currently does not address temporary uses like that. And I don't know if it's been a huge issue, I know I've received at least one phone call from someone who had questions about a church party, or a church carnival, right next to their home, and the ordinance really doesn't address that.
Okay.
Next one, exhibit seven, outdoor concert venue. There's nothing in our ordinance that specifically addresses outdoor concert venues. The most appropriate place that we felt it could fall is within recreation outdoor type three, that's a conditional use in a commercial, in commercial zones, and that would be consistent with, with recent practice, and how we've interpreted our code.
Mr. Chair, if I may have, Mike, can you, we do get calls, again, all of these things that we're doing, we usually got a call on, or met with somebody, and they, we either ran into trouble applying the code, or not having any- anything to apply it to, so, so that's where a lot of these come from. One that has come up with some question is a restaurant or a, a bar that has an outdoor music venue as part of their primary use. And we, this does not, I just want you to clarify, Mike, this does not address that situation, correct?
Correct.
And explain how we view those.
So, it's not uncommon to have a bar that has a, they might have live music on an outdoor patio one night a week or two nights a week, and we have treated those as accessory uses. We've tried to, we use kind of our own interpretation and just kind of sound planning principles in determining what we consider accessory. So, you know, if you had a bar that was 1,000 square feet, and then you had an outdoor stage set up and it was 3,000 square feet, that would hardly be accessory, that would be beyond the scope of accessory. But I think that right now, we don't have, potentially, we don't have all the tools that we probably need to perfectly address that. I'm not sure we would ever have something that would make everybody happy. Not sure how big of a problem it is, but we have received some complaints. We do have a noise ordinance that's not in our zoning ordinance, it's another part of the code that requires a special permit or a special permission from the governing body to have loud amplified music past 11:00 P.M. But this is not addressing those types of situations, this is outdoor performance, concert, or something else that's a principal use.
So, it's an exclusive use for, say, an outdoor concert?
Correct. And, and, you know, just, we recently handled one a few, few months ago, and, and that kind of made this rise to the top as something we probably should nail down in our, in our code a little bit better, that this does not address accessory uses. Next one, exhibit eight is truck stop. We've had some proposals in the past year or so about truck stops. Truck stop is something that is probably a good thing, it really generates a lot of activity, economic activity for a city, but we don't have anything that specifically addresses it. It has kind of, I wouldn't say they're unique impacts, but they're unique, they're impacts that are pretty unique to truck stops in some ways. They're usually mixed use in nature, restaurant, fuel, showering facilities for drivers, places for them to rest, all those things involve a lot of truck traffic, obviously. Probably the nearest use category in our code is automobile service type three, although that doesn't quite cover it. There's also freight truck terminal, similar impacts, but that doesn't quite cover it. So, we looked at those uses and looked at some codes from other cities, mainly one city, didn't really find a lot in other, some of the others we looked at, and, and we, we looked at a couple different, different ways to deal with this. One was through allowing it in certain zones with separate special use requirements, having a broader definition so we could address uses that are similar. Again, sometimes uses are accessory and not principal uses, this is really, truck stop is a principal use, and so that's why this is being proposed. And in this case, so, it's prohibited in most of the commercial districts, but it's conditional in C-3 and C-4 and allowed in I-1 and I-2. That's what's being proposed here. Any questions about that?
So, the C-3 and C-4, that's kind of really to accommodate the fact that you still have a retail transaction facility that, you know, subject to the right roadways and the proximity to the highway and the commercial district it's in, it may be the appropriate place for a truck stop, whereas the industrial, obviously, you do get a different environment and may not always be in similar proximity to the interstate or something for whatever variety of reasons. I guess this does allow for some flexibility. I, the last truck stop I remember in Topeka, I don't know if it was actually there before we, did the City Limits acquire Wannamaker before the trucks, the Roost was in there? So, the Roost came after Wannamaker was part of City Limits, if I remember right then, but it was about the only thing in that particular area.
Yes, that's over where the, on the border is now. You know, again, we get, we get calls, we, we get situations that we have to address, and our code is, is kind of silent on this, and that's one, this is one of those. I think we had a truck stop proposal come to us not too long ago, kind of had to, and we have to interpret what's that closest to in our code, so that helps clarify for developers of, of those for sure. On the other hand, there are some organic truck stops that just kind of appear, areas where semis are, begin to park and collectively park, maybe in a vacant parking lot.
Convenient stores with decent fuel.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I, there is a situation where we have up in North Topeka, the old Kmart, trucks have started parking there, we had to address it, our code was kind of silent on it. We, we've worked through some of the issues, but one of the things, you know, it's right across from residential, you've got engines going on all night, it's obviously, and it just, it's not appropriate in, in those cases, so that is why we, we developed a conditional use in the higher intensity commercial districts, because they may be appropriate in some areas and they may not be, it just depends, and they may need to have some spacing, they may need to have some conditions, so if that situation was derived somewhere else and that's the primary use, and you just kind of have a bunch of trucks start parking there, we, we have a tool that we can address that to help the neighborhood if that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
And so, the next one is wooden yard waste recycling. This responded to a couple inquiries about this. Turned out they were really more of an accessory use than a principal use, but there are some of these businesses. I've received at least two inquiries about these, and so there's really a need to have something in our code that addresses them, and, and so, we, we're proposing it be included in the landfill demolition section.
Is the, is the typical example a guy that's cutting firewood and had stacks of it around the yard, or are we talking a different type of yard and wood waste?
We're talking about something that's more, more intense, more commercial, like a, they're commercial tree removal companies.
Okay.
And someone even proposed to put in this really large grinder, very large, and that's, that's where this came from. This is, again, this is things we've actually experienced, and we need to be able to respond and not spend two weeks trying to figure out what, sure where something fits. You've, in your packet, and I think Annie passed out a cleaner version, there is a copy of the land use matrix, and we're updating this as we're, as we are drafting these amendments, and so, you know, if you're reference, that's, that's where, if someone asks us about a use, a land use, and a triggered zone, and what kind of zoning it needs, or can I do this, and what am I required to do if I want to use this property this way, this is what we use, is the land use matrix, which is a very good tool, this is something that was adopted two years ago. And with that, I'll take any questions or direction you have.
Questions or comments for Mr. Hall?
I have one, just I keep going back to the barrels question, 31 gallons per barrel, I guess it is. Barrels could be interpreted kind of differently throughout different places, would it make more sense to go ahead and put a gallons number within that instead of barrels?
Yeah, possibly.
That's an easily measurable number than barrels.
Okay.
And then Brian will not be confused.
The state law definition for a microbrewery does refer to capacity of not more than 15,000 barrels per year, so, just so you know.
But we could have both in this.
That's an engineering term, bro.
Let that be your last action.
Just a thought, doesn't have to be.
That's a good idea.
Any further questions or comments from Mr. Hall? Seeing none. I can motion, submit to any final remarks, departing mission.
Mr. Commissioner, may I?
Yeah, Commissioner, yes.
Parting words, I move that we adjourn.
Motion, is there a second? Wow, that's too bad.
Second.
Any further discussion? If there's anyone opposed to adjourn, say aye, otherwise we'll consider done to you.
There you go.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Beck.